All right, let's get started. We'll call the meeting to order, the town council meeting of February 23rd, 2021. This is a rescheduled regular meeting from last week. So, let's stand and do the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Wes, would you call Rome?
Yes. Councilman Dumas, here. Councilman Elwood.
Aye, here.
Councilman Graves.
Here.
Councilman Mills.
Here.
Councilman Pittman.
Here.
Everybody's present, your honor.
All right, we'll declare a forum. On the agenda, before I entertain a motion to approve the agenda, we're going to pull one thing from the agenda. We're going to pull discussion on Resolution 2021-017, a Facebook policy. We're just going to table that until we get our website up and running and then make a determination as to whether or not Facebook is really worth the time and effort for us to even have a Facebook page. So with that change, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
Make a motion we approve the agenda. Is...
Ken Mills made a motion.
Second.
Jerry Pittman seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, the agenda's approved. Wes had previously distributed minutes to all of you for meetings from January 19th and January 21st and the workshop from the 2nd, February 2nd. Do I have a motion to approve those minutes?
I'll move that we approve the minutes from January 19, 21, and February 2.
Lynn, Dumas made the motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Go ahead, doesn't matter.
All right, we'll give it to Pat this time. Pat seconded the motion. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes are approved. Ceremonials, recognitions, proclamations, or memorials. Anybody have anything? Hearing none, we'll move on to reports from standing committees. Linda, you want to give us an update on the status of the domain name and city email?
Sure, yeah. Speaking for my committee of one. We got our domain name. It is cityofholidayisland.com. And we got our emails all set up in the last, what, two weeks maybe?
Yeah.
During the bad weather, whenever it was, maybe a little before the bad weather set in. And so each of us now has a city email, and we have mayor@cityofholidayisland.com, clerk@cityofholidayisland. Wes and I, we've... Recorder Treasurer at City of Holiday Island was too complicated.
Yeah.
He's going to be a clerk, the clerk city clerk, when we get city status, so we thought clerk would be the best way to go there.
Sounds good.
And then everyone else is first initial, the last name, and @cityofholidayisland.com. We all... We're also setting up a couple of others. One is contact@cityofholidayisland.com. And... Oh, I'm going to be setting up one that says FOIA@cityofholidayisland.com.
Okay.
And then we've got one that's a catch-all, that if someone just types in something, some name, and it's not spelled right, and it goes, and it's @cityofholidayisland.com, it'll catch those two.
Okay.
So, that was highly recommended by the people that do the email service. So that's done.
So, question. If someone mistypes their email address and it goes to the catch-all, how do we know that it's in the catch-all?
We can have that one forwarded to one or two of us, or something like that, maybe.
Maybe forward it to Contact.
Good.
Because we need to manage the Contact email.
That's true.
Okay.
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 That sounds good. And I guess the good news out of all of this is we pretty much got our domain name for free.
Yeah.
It was part of the email package.
If we had an email service with them, they... It doesn't sound like it'll cost us, maybe even in future years.
Right. Okay. So, you know, the next step would be to try to get that information out to the public.
Yeah.
I did give Barbara Herring all of our contact information to go in the next edition of the Holiday Island phone book. So, all of your names and positions and email address will probably be in the Holiday Island phone book, so people will know how to get in touch with us. Okay, anything else on the domain name and email?
No.
Then how about the next committee of one on the phone system?
That committee has been hard at work also. We... I think I... I feel like that we should go with the OOMA, O-O-M-A, system.
Right.
I think you told me you had it, Jerry. No?
Well, I think it was one like it.
The one like it, okay. Bob Harrington told me they had it, so... Anyway, they seem to have the most features with the most reasonable cost at this point. All we need right now to go with it is the internet. We need internet service for the building.
Right.
And then we can order a couple of desk phones. They're going to give practically give them to us. And then we'll also be able to use the cloud email system on your personal devices, too.
Okay.
So, as soon as we get the internet going, we can order the phone system. And it's not contractual, like it's not a long-term contract, it's a month-to-month contract, too.
I know that we're in here over the weekend, working on the little bit of office remodeling that Lawrence was having done to make room for us, so I need to get back down here sometime this week and see where we stand on being able to at least get in here and do our wiring.
Any progress on the lease agreement?
No, you know, until we're ready to move in and everything, I, you know, it...
Oh, BJ is about to enter here. Hang on. I just let BJ in.
Okay.
Will we have to have computers hooked up for the phone system to work or to program it?
Nope. Not a prerequisite. You would be able to use the desktop app on your computer after you got it going on, so another advantage.
Okay.
Did you let BJ in?
Yes, she's in.
I'm in.
All right. Good evening.
Hey.
Okay. BJ, to get you up to speed here, we're on committee reports, standing committees, so if you want to pick up there. Everything up till this point is obviously recorded. Okay, let's move on to the committee working on the website.
Yeah. Okay.
Doesn't it sound like we have a lot of committees?
Yeah.
Yeah. These committees have been pretty easy to work with. They don't give me any flack, okay? The website is essentially done, and I can demo it for you if you want to go through it.
I think I'd like to see it. You want to see it?
Demo it now? Oh, how about it?
Put it up, yeah.
Okay.
Show it on screen and...
You should see it up there in a second here.
Oh, we can't go in ourselves?
Well, you can after you get home, maybe. Okay. Okay. That's sort of what it looks like on your screen. I can scroll down. This is the home screen, and let's see, I've got it good on my screen here. The home screen, you'll see it's got City of Holiday Island. I used the word city instead of town so that it wouldn't have to change it later.
Right.
And then I used the tagline Arkansas's newest city. And it's got a menu across the top here. You can see that's the menu of the sections that you can go to. If I scroll down, there's just a little blurb there, but under Welcome to the City of Holiday Island, got a little picture there. And then I've got Contact Us at the bottom of the screen, and that is our contact list with everybody's position, title, email address, and personal phones. We will have city phones, this phone... Council people will all have personal phones on there. But the mayor and clerk will have a city phone number on this when we get the OOMA system implemented. There's a Contact Us form that works down here. It actually sends this information that people would type into this form to contact@cityofholidayisland.com. And then the footer of the page is the same on every page, like the header, the menu's going across the top, and the footer is the same on every page. So, this gives you contact@cityofholidayisland.com. It'll give the central line, central telephone number for the city hall number. It'll also give Wes's fax number that he's going to have available, and the address, a mailing address. So, if I go on back up to the top to the menu again, we have an About page, and Dan was kind enough to write something pretty good for the About page. If I can scroll down, it says... It talks about the earlier history of the suburban improvement district when it started, and its development over the years, and then talks about the incorporation effort, that there were several attempts, and that we finally got incorporated December 3rd, 2020, and that we share responsibility with providing services to the community with the district. And then there's a link at the bottom to go to the district's webpage.
Is it...
So that brings up high seed.
This is live now?
Yes, it is.
Okay, good.
Yeah. Got to close that window down.
Drop it back to your little...
Yeah. I've got Zoom controls that are kind of hiding it at the top, so...
Sure.
Okay, so if we go back up to the top, I'll show you some of the other pages I put in there. And I'm open for suggestions for anything else. The next most important thing I thought probably was the meetings and the minutes. And so that's the next item here. Up at the top, it says, click here for link to all meeting recordings on the City of Holiday Island meeting YouTube channel. So I can click this link right here, and it'll pull up the YouTube channel.
I think this is going to end up being a best practice for other cities in Arkansas. Seriously.
It could be.
I haven't seen anybody else do that.
So here you can get to all of our audios and videos that we've recorded so far, and there's a link to all of them. I actually have two playlists out there, one for by month. I thought we'd do playlists by month, maybe, or something. So I've put the February ones under here and the January ones here. And so anybody that wants to can just go quickly to this page without searching through YouTube.
Right.
Okay, let me pull that one down and close that out now. Okay, come up here. And further down on the page with the minutes, we've got each meeting, and I've got the minutes, a link to the minutes, and a link to the agenda. So, like the minutes for the January 7th meeting comes right up. You can download it or print it from here. Right there it is. And so, close that back up. And the agenda was the same way. And what I thought we could do is like if you come down here to the February 23rd meeting, the one we're in today, we have no minutes, so that's a link that doesn't exist on the minutes. But the agenda is out there, and we could post those ahead of time in the agenda.
Mm-hmm.
So here's our agenda for today.
Linda, what's the rule about posting minutes? We won't post them until we've approved them, right?
I suppose.
I don't know. That's a question that I've had. I haven't seen anything on that, but I was wondering, say, what if somebody wanted FOIA minutes, say, for tonight, if we go home and at 10 o'clock somebody wants minutes?
Well, there's an escape clause or an exclusion clause at the bottom of the FOIA document that says if the documents are not available because they're in process, that's the response you give. And then you notify them when they are available.
See, I would think that we would need to consider them in process until they're approved in case there's an amendment.
That's my thought.
That's always been the question. But I said it.
I think the same thing on financial statements.
Yeah. Anything that we have to vote on, I don't think should be posted until it's...
Till it's official?
Till it's official. Because they're not official, and I don't sign them until you approve them, so...
We could probably vote on that.
Well, I think it's just a matter of what the law is, so, you know, we'll go with the... For today, we'll go with the assumption that the minutes wouldn't be distributed until they've been approved, because there may be errors in it that haven't been corrected. And if somewhere along the line we find out that that's... I shouldn't be sitting back away from this. If we find out somewhere along the line that that's not correct, then we'll change our practice.
When... What policy do you think you'll have for when you'll post to the website the links to the videos and the audios?
As soon as possible after the meeting.
Okay. All right. So if someone wants to know what happened, they...
I mean, I may not stay up till midnight to do it, but, you know...
I mean, there'd be no reason to hold that.
No.
No. Our whole objective should be to make it unnecessary for people to turn in FOIA requests.
Right.
Everything will be there as soon as it's available, and then there won't be any need for anybody to go through the, you know, the exercise of requesting it. So we'll get it out there as soon as we can.
I may be getting ahead of you, but what about... Like, we posted the agenda, but all we said was we're going to do a resolution on, you know, establishing a credit card or whatever. Are we going to post those?
That's up to Dan.
I think we should post all the resolutions and ordinances.
In advance, that we're going to discuss?
No, that they're going to be after they're passed.
Oh, the...
The draft versions.
Meeting materials is what he's talking about.
Yeah.
Um, post with the agenda. It would be a good thing to do.
Yeah, I mean, well, I mean...
If people want to comment on it, they would have an opportunity to review it.
Yeah, I think there's value in that.
We could put it in a combined PDF altogether in one PDF to make it simpler.
Yeah. Yeah, we can do that.
I sent you from the council, I was on Oklahoma, you know, we did that and did what she suggests. We just combined it all into one big PDF.
Yeah.
And posted it along with the agenda. I mean, because you're going to create it.
Right. Yeah, we can certainly do that. Any attachments that would be reference material for the meeting, we can attach to the agenda.
So do we need to have a policy of when we cut off submissions?
Well, you're going to say it may not be final until...
Yeah, that's going to be the... We're going to have to have a little more discipline going forward. I'm going to have to have a little more discipline going forward, because the agenda's been fairly fluid up until now, you know, right up until a couple of days before the meeting, because, you know, new information that we come upon and things like that. So, yeah, in the future, we're going to have to have a time cutoff, like... What's the legal requirement for posting the meeting notice is...
Two days.
Two days?
Mm-hmm.
So, well, for sure, by the time the meeting notice goes out, you know, the agenda's going to have to be frozen.
We'd always amend it at the meeting.
Well, yeah, that's what we need to do, is just, you know, what's out there, we don't pull it back before we amend it at the meeting.
Right. Okay.
Okay.
What else on the...
Got it going on. I'll show you the other pages. Documents doesn't have a whole lot on it. I was going to call it financials only, but then I decided to call it documents, because we might come up with other things that we want to put on this page.
Mm-hmm.
And so I've got the two financial statements that Wes has issued out here. One is as of the end of 2020, and the other one is as of the end of January.
Well, that's where you...
And so this is the end of January one I'm pulling up right now. There it is.
That's where you put the resolutions, right?
Yeah, at the... That's when you put those, the completed, approved resolutions, in that file?
Yeah, and that's exactly what we've got there, just what you said. If I go to Governance, we've got the resolutions.
Okay. And the index that's being created, you could make one document and then put all the links in that one document, so it'd save you a lot of work on your website. It's easier to embed those links into that document.
Yeah. If you didn't know how to do it, tell me.
I do. I do, in Word. I can do it in Word.
I know, but I don't know if I can do it on the website.
Oh, I see.
That's the thing.
Okay.
Yeah, so, and I have to say, the stuff is kind of spread out on the page, and that was the way this particular design that I happened to choose put them there, but I'm researching ways to compress it and get it a little not-so-spread-out, but...
Linda, can you hear me?
Yeah.
There is somebody that would like to join the meeting.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, there we go. Okay, I got them. Okay. So what I've got here is Wes sent me all the approved resolutions, and he scanned them in for me, and I've got them all posted here. So like number 202112 is authorizing the town to establish a contract with an email provider. I'll just pull it up, for example. And you can see... There, there it is. It's a scanned copy. And if we go down to the bottom, you see it's signed, so that is the final version. Okay. Now, okay.
Now, when I did those, Linda, I commented, you know, I used the document feeder, while some of them didn't feed in exactly straight.
Yeah, but they still came out fine on here.
Okay.
They did, yeah. It wasn't a problem.
Okay.
So don't worry about that. So, here we go, back up to the top. I don't know if I can find that thing. Okay, here we go, up to the top again. And I only have down... I put the ones that were pending and haven't been approved at the bottom, but we may take that 017 off. And so after... Oh, after resolutions, I also want to put on here when we get to that point, I've got a placeholder for ordinances and municipal codes. So...
I would not post any pending ones.
Okay.
Because...
You might change them.
Until we vote on them here, they're subject to all kinds of changes.
Okay.
Well, if we post them with the...
Yeah, they're going to be with them.
It'll be the agenda.
They'll be with the agenda, yeah.
That's true. That's true. Okay. And so anyway, that's that page. And then I put a page in for FOIA to explain FOIA to the public, Freedom of Information Act FOIA. And here, we're going to talk about our FOIA policy in a second, so I figured that would go there. And whoever does not have their microphone muted, would you mute it, please? And then the FOIA request form would be on here, too. And there's also going to be a link to the Freedom of Information handbook on there.
Right now, it's just a picture of it?
Right now, it's just a picture.
Okay.
Okay. So, and I have another kind of placeholder thing for links, but I don't have anything out there yet. And then the last page is the municipal officials, and here is our picture, so people know what we look like, sort of.
A bunch of masked murderers.
Masked people that you won't be able to identify on the street.
Went up to the town square and robbed a drugstore.
Right, yeah.
Someday, we're going to want to get a picture with all masks.
I think we could thank Wes's wife for that photo. So, okay, that's the website in a nutshell.
Excellent.
And it's simple, straightforward.
It's excellent.
Can you add tabs on top? Is there room for more tabs on top?
I can string it all the way across the line and maybe shorten the names, as far as I know.
I can't see where I can...
Yeah.
Because one of the city websites that I was looking at, and I don't remember which one, but every month, the mayor put kind of a, this is what's going on message out there.
State of the Month.
Which I, yeah, which I, you know, we're not going to have a newsletter, so it, you know, it's an opportunity to inform people about what's going on, because that, you know, I hear that already, even though we're only six weeks old. You know, people ask me, you know, what's going on? We don't hear anything, so that's because we have no way of communicating.
Kind of like that status report.
Yeah.
It's whatever he wants to post.
Whatever, just a fireside chat.
You got to get a dog first.
Mayor's message.
Yeah, that's more. And then another one we...
I think that might be what this was called, a message from the mayor or something like that.
We'll put that out there.
Right.
Maybe one that says announcements or something for any special notices or anything?
A calendar, is a calendar or...
In a calendar.
Might be able to have a calendar. I can check on that. Might be something like that we could do. Any other thoughts?
That means we got to do something.
And if we did Mayor's message or something, or even an announcements page, you could keep all the historical ones out there, too.
Well, so far, you've done an excellent job.
Okay.
Thank you.
What are you going to pay me? That's what I want to know.
We'll double your salary as a council member.
Okay.
Yeah, you get an end of month bonus.
Just a thought, you know, prior life, I had maintenance on a Facebook page that I shared responsibilities for administration, just in case I wasn't available. Do we have a plan for that for this, a shared administrator?
I was hoping you'd step up to it.
Thank you, Lam.
That sounded like a volunteer thing.
Thank you. Thank you for volunteering.
I've never officially appointed Linda as our webmaster, but you are now the official assistant.
I will conditionally accept if I don't have to do a Facebook page.
I think the Facebook page is going to be a dead duck.
Yeah, I see no need for a Facebook.
I don't either.
Yeah. The only reason to have a Facebook page was because we didn't have a website. Now that we have a website, I think the Facebook thing is going to die a quick death.
Facebook page is just open up a mess.
Yeah. Now, Linda, will you...
Now, Linda, will you be monitoring then for the FOIA requests that come in on that?
Yeah, we'll have to watch that email. Lynn and I can help monitor that, I think, don't you, Lynn?
I'll just add it to my phone, so when they show up, it'll pop up.
Yeah.
Okay.
And if you're the one that's administering, we need to put the same on yours. If they're going to use the FOIA address, you know, not the contact address.
Well, we could, we...
We can make it a policy.
I put FOIA just because it was different.
Right.
People could just send all that like FOIA's in there. But we could send them to the same club.
Okay, all right.
Linda, can you write something up for Kerry to put in the Hi-Sid newsletter announcing this website? If we're ready to turn it loose to the public.
There is one little issue left with it. It's not being found on Google or search engines quite yet. I don't know if you have to build up some history with it or what to do.
It takes up to 25 days for Google to start finding stuff. And it happens when, it happens by doing the request to see it. Then it starts putting it in the mix and they, they'll start picking up on it.
Well, I know that I could get it on my phone a little bit easier today than I got it yesterday. But it's still kind of hard to...
Well, if we all just start Googling it every day.
Just going to say, why don't we just start doing it?
So, is the website address HTTPS, so it's secured?
Yep.
Whack-whack, W W, cityofholidayisland.com?
Yes.
So if I type that address in, it should pop right up?
Oh, definitely, that's what we type the whole address.
Okay.
In the note that you asked Kerry to put in the newsletter, you might want to suggest that people go in and, you know, you might want to tell them that they actually, they'll have to, they may have to actually type in the whole address.
For a month or...
But do it several times because, you know, the more hits it gets, the more likely it'll be to pop up on Google. You know, if it doesn't get any hits, then Google will never find it.
And your own, I noticed my own device gets smarter about finding it too.
And you all, they don't have to type in all that HTTPS?
No, just the WWW.
You don't have to do that. The cityofholidayisland.com and pops right up.
You got it.
Yeah.
Good deal.
All right, just one hit.
Okay.
No, I just went right to it, I didn't...
Mine just said, "The site can't be reached." Cityofholidayisland.
Dot com. Well, if you, I don't know what you get if you just put city of Holiday Island.
No, I put...
Mine popped up.
I have a raised hand, do you want to take a question?
Sure.
Okay, let me, CNJ, we're acknowledging you. Someone called CNJ? You have your hand raised?
Why am I getting...
Oh, I, there, I have to ask you that.
What did you type in? Cityofholidayisland.com. And I got holidayisland. I don't think you want to start using that.
Huh, I just put cityofholidayisland.com.
Can you unmute yourself, CNJ?
Is that a Kindle?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, but it's still...
I guess not.
Okay, we'll move on. Well, Linda, I can't express enough how much we appreciate all the work you've put in on this. It saved the city a fortune. So...
Man, you got one for a fortune.
It's excellent, it's what we wanted, it's what we needed.
I think we could have paid a lot of money and not gotten anything this good.
Yeah.
Okay, moving on then.
Should do it.
Posting requirements for passing ordinances, discussion only. Lynn, this is your baby.
Well, as we were moving forward to setting up our city, I see we're creating resolutions and we were talking about passing ordinances. And we've recently had a financial statement that needed to be published. And so I just, for my own benefit, started digging into the statutes to find out what the publication and notification requirements are and found that just about everything that we do has a little bit different language. And so my concern was, I don't want to step on our toes and stumble. And I created a document that would be a place where we could tabulate or accumulate all the different kind of requirements for all the different kinds of things that we do. And so, on this document, there's a lot of language, has it been shared with the group?
I have not seen it.
Okay.
Ah, yes, it probably has not been shared.
Okay, so because of the bullet named on the agenda to talk about the posting locations, we could just go to that section. In my investigation, in the study of what we have to do for ordinances, it says that we need to do publishing in a, or post them in a newspaper that's published or printed in our community. And I don't think that exists. And so there was another paragraph in that statute. And if you're taking notes or want to do it yourself, the statute is 1455-206. It's about posting ordinances.
You said 65?
14-55.
Oh, 55, okay.
55-206. And it's specifically about publishing and posting ordinances. There's a, not having a newspaper, then it allows us or requires that we post ordinances in five most public places. And so I generated a list for, just from brainstorming and have bounced it off a couple of other individuals. The first place I put down was a bulletin board near the entrance to the town office. And my thought was, on the wall by the front door of Suite 103. Second one was a bulletin board near the entrance to the ballroom at Holiday Island Country Club. That being another public place, a lot of people there, somewhere on the wall, or maybe it has to be a freestanding post or a pair of poles, but have a bulletin board there. The third location that I identified to be public was the, near the entrance to the rec center. There's a certain amount of activity at that end of the community. And then the fourth was inside the district boardroom. So right in this room, one of these empty walls, we'd have a bulletin board that'd have a place where we could publicly post. So when we have meetings and people are in here publicly, they could see them. And grasping at straws now, but the fifth one was in the parking area in the marina, near or under the illuminated security light. It's a public place. Now, in my investigation, I found that other municipalities use different places. And Eureka Springs for one, they post in the city hall, the Eureka Springs Public Library, Bunch's Quick Check, Hart's Family Center, and Tad's Quick Stop. And I, in my thought process, I thought keeping it public means keeping it in public property rather than private property because I can see putting it on private property, you'd have other issues to contend with. So that's the list that I drafted for discussion tonight to see if those would be good at public places to post our ordinances.
How about the board at Sunfest? Now, that would be a private spot, but everybody looks at the board and when you go in and get your card and look to see what's up there.
My thought along that line is if we do it in anyplace else or wherever we do it, it needs to be our bulletin board. And it has to be locked so that we control it with a key so that we can control what goes on it and when it comes down. So sharing somebody else's bulletin board wouldn't be right, but maybe they'd have wall space we could use.
You might want to consider that. You know, there's a lot of people go to Sunfest that wouldn't necessarily go to the clubhouse or someplace like that. Of course, anybody can come down here to, you know, to the city hall and read it. So as long as they know what's out there to be seen.
Lynn, in your research, there hadn't been any like attorney general opinions that saying that if you don't have a newspaper published or whatever it was in your town, that if it circulates in your town, that doesn't count?
Some of the requirements that we have, like when we get to zoning and planning, and urban planning, when we have public forums and meetings, it is specific. It has to be put in a newspaper that's distributed in our area for a specific period of time and number of postings. So different language says it has to be in a newspaper. For ordinances, it doesn't have to be if it's not published or printed here. So the third bullet that I had in this document was the annual publication of financial statements. And it says, "The recorded treasurer shall publish annually the financial statement for the municipality and its receipts and expenditures." And goes on, the second paragraph, "The financial statement may be published for one time in a newspaper published in the municipality by April 1st of the following year." Then the second paragraph of that ordinance, or that statute, "Until a newspaper is published within the corporate limits of Holiday Island," as are my words added, "it shall cause to be posted the financial statement in the first two public places designated." And it doesn't say for how long. And that's a statute 1459-116, specifically annual publication of financial statements.
This is...
So they're all a little bit...
Would our Facebook page, where we post them, would that not be...
No.
I found nothing in the statutes that allow electronic posting to be meeting the requirement.
In fact, that's a subject of conversation down in Little Rock right now. I don't know that they'll get to the point of having an actual bill drafted that'll make this legislative session. But there is discussion going on down in Little Rock that would change the law to make it acceptable for municipalities to post things electronically.
Yeah.
And of course, the newspaper publishers are dead set against it. But the interesting thing to me about it is that everybody, if they still get a newspaper, get it digitally. So, you know, the way the law reads right now, you can't publish anything digitally. However, you can pay somebody a lot of money to publish it digitally for people to read. And so, you know, with that kind of circular logic, I think that if they would get a bill drafted, it would probably have a good chance of passing. But I have run this question by the lawyers at the municipal league and they're doing some checking because they're not quite comfortable with the idea that the, just because it's not published in Holiday Island, that that would let us off the hook. And in the past, we have used, the Carroll County News, Hi-Sid uses it for making public notices. The incorporation committee used it for making public notices. So I think it's an open issue. However, it's a serious open issue because the Carroll County News charges $7 per column inch.
And so a one-page document, from what I've been looking at, would cost about $100.
Right.
One page.
One page.
And some of the ordinances that we're going to be looking at could be 20, 30 pages.
Thousands.
So it, cities, well-established cities in Arkansas right now that only pass a handful of ordinances a year are spending, you know, $50,000 a year publishing the notices and everything that they have to note. In some towns, it's the equivalent, it's more than the equivalent of one employee.
That's just not fair to small towns.
Yeah, so...
Well, the lead that I took was from Eureka Springs. And in one of the ordinances that was attached to it on their online system was an affidavit that was, it says, "I, the under-signed duly elected, qualified and acting city clerk treasurer within the city of Eureka Springs, does hereby certify that there is no newspaper of record published within the corporate limits of the city." And it's dated and signed. And right behind it was a proof of posting of the ordinance. And that's where I got these locations of where they put it physically instead of publishing it. So I took that from the lead from Eureka Springs and the documents are dated January 26, 2016. So they're not real, but they're not this year.
Yeah. So that could be that there's certain, like you pointed out, certain documents do not have to be published in a newspaper and certain documents do.
Right.
Is this something that we, as a council, vote on to adopt posting places or how would they handle that?
Yes.
Eventually, we'll have, I think we'll have a resolution or something.
That sounds right.
To indicate where, you know, you know, we don't have to do everything by resolution. We can do a lot of things just by council vote. However, the reason I like resolutions is because it documents exactly what we're doing. So there's no misunderstanding about what we're voting on and things like that, so...
And the warning, the misinterpretations.
And resolutions are free.
Well, I think we ought to try and do the postings where we can rather than putting them in the newspaper because that's just basically a waste of money because very few people out here read them anyway.
Even if we have to purchase some weatherproof cases that can be locked and what have you? Would it be cheaper than posting?
One other comment on the postings. You just read an example where they attached a testimonial to the ordinance.
Yes.
That they did their proper posting.
Yes, sir.
I checked with the mayor of Berryville and they do run everything in the newspaper. And they attach a, you know, a screenshot of the newspaper posting and attach it to the ordinance. So everybody basically documents evidence that it was properly posted because down the road, if you try to, if you try to enforce an ordinance, especially if there's fines or penalties associated with it, improper posting of the ordinance before it was passed is a legal defense for not having to pay the fine or whatever. So, you know, it's something we would do.
So in that regard, this resolution has language in it to authorize the mayor to expend funds as needed to purchase, construct, mount and maintain suitable bulletin boards at specific locations. So the language is in this draft. And the checking I did, depending on how large you get, you know, it's $150 to $400 for what sizes you are. And a thought that I had was, when we talk about an ordinance that might be 15 pages long and that it has to hang up there a certain number of days and space becomes an issue, there's probably not a restriction that we print on a four-by-six piece of paper instead of an eight-and-a-half by 11 piece of paper, at least it gets posted.
Do the, those that are happy to be published in a newspaper, is there restrictions on the size of the type?
I didn't see it. But I did a FOIA request of our county clerk when I missed the ballot draw for our election. And I asked for proof that it was published because I was certain, I looked at every newspaper that they publish in. And she sent me the affidavit that the newspaper created that says we published it on these dates. So the newspaper creates an affidavit document that they've done their work.
I have seen those that Hi-Sid has used, that they've gotten an affidavit for too, so.
But I didn't see anything for how much space you use in the newspaper. You know, that's what I thought too, is why do they print it this big and now it's going to cost $100? Why couldn't we have a $50 version of it?
Well, depending on how, and I think the newspaper lobby's pretty stout in Arkansas, is that it's probably statutory of what, it can't be any smaller than seven point or whatever.
Sure.
Spacing and what all, so...
When we used to do audits, I know we would see if things had to be published in the paper. The paper would provide a copy of what was published along with a notarized affidavit that, when it was published.
Yeah, the Carroll County News might do the same thing, I don't know. So anyway, that's an item that needs some resolution yet and we'll probably want a legal opinion on that before we, you know, firm this up.
The only deadline that I see is the posting of the financial report and the newspaper is an option, so...
Lynn, does it mention anything about the town approving an official journal? Lynn, does it mention anything about the town approving an official journal of where, I mean, taking a vote that, you know, the official journal of the town of Holiday Island, city of Holiday Island will be the Carroll County News or...
No, I haven't seen anything like that, but I can do that search.
You know, the Eureka Springs Independent probably has more circulation than...
They do.
Than anybody. I don't know that they can tell you what their circulation is. They can tell you how many copies they give out at Sunfest every week, but they may be a little more reasonable price, and it's a bona fide newspaper.
Well, I don't...
But they may not, they may not be an approved newspaper for legal publications.
And I don't recall ever seeing any legal notices in that Eureka Springs paper. I don't remember, I don't recall ever seeing one.
You can go on to the Arkansas Press Association, and it should have a tab that would give you a list of all official legal, they call them legal newspapers.
Okay. But that may be the exact reason why Eureka Springs did this in 2016, that there's no newspaper quote of record, end quote, published within the corporate limits of the city.
Yeah. Well, I guess we'll keep working on this, and when we get it ready to approve, this will be our first ordinance. So, this will be our guinea pig.
Okay.
On publishing and following all the rules.
Okay.
And then we'll know what we're going to do going forward. But whatever we do, it can't cost us $50,000 a year.
No, but if it's $300 times five, it's $1,500 plus whatever structure you have to create.
Make sure of it.
I guess the only other thing I wanted to add to the discussion, then, is it appropriate that we create one ordinance to compile all the different posting requirements? Is that an easy source for us? Is that a good thing to do? If we just rely on the statutes and every time we do something, go look it up, it doesn't, we don't have to do an ordinance?
Mm-hmm.
As far as all of them, all, the only ordinance would say is where we're going to do public postings. That's all that would have to be in it. My thought was to compile a list, and then each time we have a new requirement to post something, we would modify this ordinance.
I think that's a good idea.
Yeah.
For future generations.
Okay.
They have, you know, one document to go to to kind of guide them as to what needs to be done.
Okay. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you very much. All right. Moving on to, I had special committees on the agenda, but there are no special committee reports. Old business, non-new business, Resolution 2021-014, requesting advancement from a town to a city. Do I have a motion to place this on the floor for discussion?
I'll move if we place it on the floor.
Linda, move.
Second.
Jerry seconded it. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
opposed? Wes, would you read that ordinance?
Would you like me to share it on my screen or...
If you want to.
Will it come up here? If I can find it.
Otherwise, we can tape this one on your screen.
Okay. Share the screen.
Hold on a second. People might want to read along.
There it is.
There you go.
Okay. Resolution number 2021-014, a resolution authorizing the Recorder Treasurer to apply for the advancement of the Town of Holiday Island to a city of the second class. Whereas, the in most recent general election, 1,145 registered voters living within the boundaries of the Town of Holiday Island voted on the issue of incorporation. And whereas, the Geographical Information Service for the state of Arkansas has estimated the population of the Town of Holiday Island to be 2,260 inhabitants, based on the most recent dicennial census data. And whereas, having a population over 500 but less than 2,500 entitles the Town of Holiday Island to be designated a city of the second class. And whereas, the ACA 1437-108 provides for the Town of Holiday Island to apply for reclassification to become a city of the second class upon submitting such an application and accompanying qualifying information. And whereas, qualifying information is defined in the statute as a resolution passed by the Town Council and satisfactory evidence of the population of the Town of Holiday Island. Now be it resolved by the Town Council of Holiday Island that the Recorder Treasurer of the Town of Holiday Island make an application to the State Auditor, State Attorney General, and Secretary of State as provided by law for advancement of the Town of Holiday Island, Arkansas, from a town to a city of the second class. Be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution and other such evidence and matters as may be required be attached to the application, passed and approved by the Town of Holiday Island, Arkansas, on the date of February 23, 2021.
Before opening this up for discussion, Wes, you did, you did make contact with the Secretary of State or somebody.
Yes, I did. I contacted the Secretary of State, and the response I got there was, oh, they did not deal in that, even though they have to sign it. They suggested I call the county clerk or also the municipal league. So, this would have been probably last, a week ago, Thursday or Friday. I called Connie Doss, and she said that she was going to be working from home during, due to the weather this past week, but she would take some books and study it and get back to me this week. Well, this is just the beginning of a week. I haven't heard anything from her. So, today I tried to call the municipal league, left a message there with the legal department, and they have not gotten back to me yet.
The statute says that's what we're supposed to do.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
But this is, I think, a classic example of the fact that it happens so infrequently that nobody, nobody that holds those offices or those positions right now has probably ever dealt with it, so...
Send it to them anyway, and you'll be following the statute.
I think one of the evidences would be a printout of 1437-108. I think you should do that, include that.
Yeah.
Right.
So, they don't have to look it up.
I, I'd just do it, yeah.
Get the letter in the mail and then worry about them not responding later.
Mm-hmm. Well, give Connie a chance to...
Well, right.
Check it out.
I didn't want to push her anymore at this point.
She may very well come up with a form or something to use. Okay. Any other discussion on this, on the resolution?
I don't know. I read the statute, and it's pretty straightforward, and I think we just go with it. If we, if we, if they, if we do this and they approve it, does that start the clock ticking on the establishing wards and, no, it doesn't?
It does because we have to have those done by April so that primaries can be done. They're not primaries, there's some requirement.
April next year.
April next year.
They have to be able to, the Election Commission has to have the ward boundaries so that they can set up precincts for...
Change the election records.
You have a year to do it essentially.
I think there was an article in the Gazette, I know that I read, maybe it was on the municipal league, but the problem with, that this delay in getting the census information is creating for the creation of congressional district and all kinds of everybody's district boundaries, which has to be done before next year's primary election.
They're making gerrymandering difficult.
I don't know. I make a motion, we approve it.
I'll second.
Ken made the motion, and Lynn seconded it. Any further discussion? All in favor, Wes, you got to do the roll, Paul, on this one.
Yeah. Okay, Lynn, wait a second. I've got a call down here. Okay.
I have any more court.
How about, let's go, how about Councilman Pittman?
Yes.
Councilman Mills?
Yes.
Councilman Graves?
Yes.
Or Councilmember Graves, sorry. Councilman Elwood?
Yes.
Councilmember Dumas?
Yes.
All approved unanimously.
Okay, the resolution passed. If you can figure out how to make the application, go for it. All right, moving on to Resolution 2021-015, authorizing a town credit card. Do I have a motion to place this one on the floor for consideration?
I'll so move.
Pat made the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Jerry seconded it. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, Wes, you want to read the...
Yes. Resolution number 2021-015, a resolution authorizing a credit card for the Town of Holiday Island, Arkansas. Whereas, the Town of Holiday Island, Resolution 2021-002, authorized the establishment of bank accounts and certain funds and accounts for conducting Town of Holiday Island business. And whereas, the town business environment, or today's business environment requires electronic means of executing purchases and making payments. And whereas, credit cards are now the required form of payment for most internet purchases and contracting for ongoing services. And whereas, Resolution 2021-002 did not anticipate such a need. Now be it resolved by the Town of Holiday Island that the Recorder Treasurer is hereby authorized to obtain a credit card in the name of the Town of Holiday Island, Arkansas. Be it further resolved that the Record, that the Recorder Treasurer will be the primary holder of such credit card, but is authorized to allow other town officials or employees to use the card under close supervision and exclusively for authorized town business. All applicable laws, Town of Holiday Island, Arkansas resolutions and procedures relatively to making municipal purchases and accounting for those purchases apply when making credit card purchases. Credit card balances must be paid in full each month in order to avoid deficit spending, passed and approved by the Town Council of Holiday Island, Arkansas, on the date of February 23, 2021.
Is there any discussion on this resolution?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
The concern that I have is that it be a pure credit card, not attached to any checking accounts owned by Holiday Island.
Not a debit.
Not a debit card, not tied to a checking account. It's got to be purely a credit card that comes in the mail and we pay the bill.
I would be in favor of that. I do not like debit cards.
We'll have, what, a credit limit of $20?
Probably.
Which we can't say.
Yeah. The credit limit will exceed our ability to...
Is there a preference to what company we use?
You talked to the cornerstone...
I have talked to Cornerstone Bank. They do not issue a credit card themselves, but if you look at their website, they have an association with somebody, and I think you go on the website and click on that and apply for the credit card there, but it's not a cornerstone credit card.
Just make sure you get one that pays you money for using it.
That what?
One that gives you payback.
Cash back.
You get two percent...
Rewards, cash rewards.
What's that girl's name?
Any other discussion? Wes, you want to call the roll vote?
I'll move to approve it.
I'll second. Now, now.
Okay. Linda, move to approve the resolution, and Pat seconded it. So, Wes, you can call the roll.
Councilmember Dumas?
Aye.
Councilmember Elwood?
Aye.
Councilmember Graves?
Aye.
Councilmember Mills?
Aye.
Councilmember Pittman?
Aye.
All in favor, Mr. Mayor?
Okay, the resolution passes. Moving on to Resolution 2021-016 or 016, a resolution authorizing the Town of Holiday Island to acquire internet and fax line service. Do I have a motion to place this one on the floor for consideration?
So move.
Jerry made the motion. Do I have a second? Pat seconded, or Lynn seconded it. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Say aye, have it. So, Wes, would you read the resolution?
Yes. Resolution number 2021-016, a resolution authorizing the Town of Holiday Island to acquire internet and fax line service. Whereas, the Town of Holiday Island has been recently incorporated and will need to establish internet service and a fax line in its town office and meeting room facilities in order to carry on the business affairs of the town. And whereas, such internet service is required in order to implement an office telephone system with VoIP technology, which offers a solution for the least cost, communicate through email, access internet cloud storage, perform many other business functions, as well as to conduct town council meetings by Zoom. And whereas, there is immediate need for the town to set up and use telephone and Zoom services via the internet, as well as fax line service, in order to effectively conduct town business. And whereas, the cost of establishing and maintaining such internet service and a fax line is estimated not to exceed $1,700 per year, billed on a monthly basis with a three-year contract. And whereas, Fox Communications has the fastest and most reliable internet service to the Holiday Island area and is capable of providing a fax landline through their communication cable network. Now be it resolved by the Town Council of Holiday Island that the mayor is authorized to enter into a three-year contract with Fox Communications for network service and a fax line in the town's office facility, passed and approved by the Town Council of Holiday Island, Arkansas, on the date of February 23, 2021.
Right before we open this up for general discussion, it just so happens... Right before we open this up for general discussion, it just so happens that Linda's committee worked on this one too. Linda, you want to fill people in? I think we've talked about this before, but you can fill people in a little bit on what the contract will entail.
Yeah, I think the, it's a three-year contract and there's some, some legal, I don't know exactly how to explain it, but I've been told by Verizon and Cox, both, that at least with telecommunications contracts, if the city should not have money to pay, the contract can be ended, you know, at the end of the month where the money runs out. So there's no problem with signing a three-year contract and.
So it's a severable contract.
Pay at all if, if for something, if everything goes belly up. But, and I think we've got the cost down now to sixteen, around $1,600 a year.
Right. We didn't change the resolution until it's going down.
Yeah. So, I don't know. What else does anyone want to know about it?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I need to know what fax services you need. I mean, what kind of fax documents do you expect to receive and need to retransmit via fax? I'm just curious, because we talked about it in a workshop and email, so just curious.
Offhand, the one that I think of is, I think in the state code, maybe providing FOIA's, it provides for receiving requests by fax. And I suppose that would also mean you could respond by fax. I'm trying to think what other things I have done. There are some things, and I don't know that it's specifically for the town yet, but there are things that I have done with organizations by fax. And there were certain things in the past that I communicated with the IRS by fax, where you communicated with a particular agent, that agent would have a fax number, you would fax it directly to them.
The cost is $18 a month for, for the fax service.
And a $25 upfront installation cost.
So it's not cheap necessarily, based, you know, relative to our resources, but it's not phenomenally expensive either.
Well, I was just thinking that, you know, as an alternative, if they have to have a piece of paper, we could send a FedEx document for $11.50 a month, you know, as an alternative way to get a piece of paper in someone's hands.
I don't remember the last time in my, even in my professional career that I sent a fax, but.
Advantage of it would be is if they want the piece of paper or something, you can fax it to them and they have it right now.
Yeah, I know. But I would guess those same people have a computer and have email capability, we can send them a PDF document. You know, that's the alternative. I mean, that's the business environment I came from and retired to a couple of years ago, we disabled the fax machine. We used that line for an emergency phone call because it was wired different than the phone service was.
Now that there's scan and email capability, you know, fax is all but obsolete, but if we, if we did not include fax in the initial contract, could we still add it for 25 bucks and $18 a month in the future if we?
Oh, yeah. Yeah. They just come and do a little doctoring of the box that brings the internet in, or brings the Cox table into the building.
Why don't we leave the authorization for the fax in the resolution so that if we want to add it later on, we don't need a new resolution, but the initial contract will need fax out.
You know, there are some web-based fax programs that you can use where you pay by the piece.
Actually, we get one free with the Ooma system.
Then that may solve that. I mean, the rare, the rare occasion that somebody needs a fax, that, that might.
We would not have a separate fax line, you know, as part of our contact.
I mean, looking ahead to your FOIA request for records, we don't even give an option for faxes.
Hey, just don't, modern, it just, I don't know. I haven't used a fax machine in 10 years.
Well, we, we'll leave it out of the initial contract, but let's go ahead and leave it in the resolution.
I, I agree with that.
I agree with that.
But if we find we need it, then we'll get it.
It can be installed in about a week, is what I was told.
Yeah. I, I doubt whether we'll ever need it, but sure as the dickens, in the first week, somebody will come along, some reason will appear.
I mean, even now, when, when, you know, I sign papers and get them right back to, like, my financial advisor or something, and they have an app, you know, you send your electronic documents through, they don't do faxes anymore.
I guess. Another one that I thought of was back when we had the incorporation committee and I was filing ethics reports. I would fax them to the Ethics Commission. I'd still also have to file a paper document, but when I faxed it, then I would get an additional 10 days to file it, and I knew they had it.
Sure.
The way I understand, the way the FOIA faxing would work with Ooma, it's an electronic fax, and you can direct it to a fax machine.
In the rare occasion that I had, my Outlook, I used it for faxing. I fax a document through Outlook to a phone number. So, that's how I did it when I, where I worked.
Does it work in reverse then? If somebody wanted to fax something to you, would it appear on your screen somehow that you could print it off?
I don't believe I had that capability.
No.
They couldn't, because it's a phone number that has to be. But I could send it to a fax machine.
I'm guessing someone could fax something to you or Wes through your Ooma phone number by using an electronic faxing mechanism.
Let's just go without it and say, if we, when we need it.
We'll see if it comes up.
If it actually comes up, we do it.
Have a solution ready.
All right. Any other discussion? And I'll entertain a motion that we approve this resolution.
I'll move that we approve Resolution 2021-016.
Lynn made the motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Ken seconded it. Wes, you can call the roll.
Okay. Councilmember Graves?
Graves, yes.
Mm-hmm. Councilmember Mills?
Yes.
Councilmember Pittman?
Yes.
Councilmember Dumas?
Yes.
Councilmember Elwood?
Yes.
All in favor, Mr. Mayor?
All right, the resolution passes. BJ, for your benefit, we scratched the next resolution from the agenda, so you don't have to worry about it for the minute. Next thing on the agenda is FOIA policy and forms. Now, what committee came up with that?
I'm sorry, one of those committees I was working on, yes.
Linda's getting all her projects.
I get all mine out of the way quickly, don't I?
She's gonna, she's gonna skate through the last 18 months.
Okay. I've, I've got this policy I wrote up on the screen, and you want me to read it or just tell you about it?
Oh, why don't you read it? Because I think we're going to, I think we're going to end up wanting to vote on this to approve it as a policy.
Okay. It, the City of Holiday Island is committed to following the Arkansas Freedom of Information Act, FOIA, and making it as easy as possible for our citizens to access information about our government operations and actions. An informed and engaged public improves the quality of our decisions. Our goal is to provide as many of our documents as possible to the public via our website, as well as our meeting recordings via our YouTube channel, Town of Holiday Island Meetings. Actually, that's supposed to be City of Holiday Island. The public documents available on the city's website, cityofholidayisland.com, include city forms, policies, meeting agendas, meeting minutes, financial reports, resolutions, ordinances, and municipal code. In accordance with the Arkansas Freedom of Information Act, all of our public documents are open to inspection and copying by any citizen of the state of Arkansas within three business days. If you are unable to find a document on our website, you may fill out our FOIA request form, available via a link below, and email it to foia@cityofholidayisland.com. The request should be sufficiently specific to enable us to locate the records with reasonable effort. The requester may also set up an appointment with the Recorder Treasurer to examine records and/or request copies of any documents that are available in city hall offices at 110 Woodsdale Drive, Suite 102, 103, Holiday Island, Arkansas. We are also able to email copies of documents up to the size limits of our email service, or copy documents to a new USB thumb drive, which you can pick up at the office by appointment with the Recorder Treasurer. A fee may be assessed to cover the actual costs of reproduction, in which case the Requestor will be informed of such fee, if specified in the request, prior to the city making the copies available. It is our policy to provide all documents requested as soon as possible in accordance with the Arkansas FOIA. Any citizen making a request for documents will need to provide an email or phone number, both if available, so that we may contact you to best assist in obtaining the public documents you want and provide them to you as soon as possible. The request form is not required for current items of business scheduled for public hearings or meetings by any city commission, board, committee, or council. Those files are available by contacting the mayor or Recorder Treasurer. We could also put, we're also on our website if we're going to do that. So, and then I put the contact information in for the mayor and Recorder Treasurer. The State Attorney's General's Office, along with the Arkansas Press Association, has generated a handbook on the Arkansas Freedom of Information Act. You may contact the Attorney General's Office at the FOIA hotline, 800-482-8982, to request a copy of the handbook, or with any FOIA questions. A link to the latest edition of the handbook is available below. You must have Adobe Acrobat Reader to view it, which is also available at the website. That would be the Attorney General's, or the Press Association website. And then I have a link to the arkansawpress.org website, which has the handbook on it. And that is the website where you can get the link to the Adobe Acrobat Reader. And then I have a link to the City of Holiday Island FOIA request form. And then also, I put together a fee agreement, which is also referred to in the request form. And the fee agreement reads, "In order to offset the actual costs of reproduction of public documents in response to a FOIA request to the city, the Requestor may be subject to a fee that covers the cost of paper, ink, and devices used in the reproduction activities. Such costs will only include those costs allowable by the Freedom of Information Act and will be disclosed to the Requestor in an itemized breakdown prior to the reproduction effort if the cost is expected to exceed the amount noted by the Requestor in their specific request." And you'll see that in the request. "If the cost is greater than $25, the fee must be paid in advance." I believe that's in the law. "There will be no charge if the documents can be emailed to the Requestor. If a charge for a FOIA request is not paid, further FOIA requests from the Requestor will not be completed until the previous FOIA request charge has been paid." And the fee schedule that I came up with, and this was based on actual costs, and I believe y'all maybe had received a copy of that spreadsheet where I figured out the costs. A black and white sheet would cost five cents, a color, a sheet with color in it would cost 23 cents, the thumb drive would cost $10, and we would also charge back to the Requestor the actual cost of mailing if they wanted it done via US mail. And if the cost was determined to be less than a dollar, like, they could get 20 sheets that would only cost a dollar, 20 black and white pages would only cost them a dollar. If they, if the cost was less than a dollar, I think we should just say no charge myself, but that's up to you guys. So, that's the policy, and we can go look at the form. Let's see if I can pull that up here.
Before we go to the form, can I ask a question?
Oh, sure. Go ahead.
You made the statement in the fee agreement that if we can email it, there'll be no cost. I recall reading in the FOIA document that there may be cases or requests that require a lot of work, and you might have to hire temporary people to depile the data, and there will be a cost, and that result might be emailable. So, my concern is those exceptions in this policy not covering that.
Yeah, and maybe others can work at the law, but I didn't find any clause in the law that allowed you to charge back personnel time.
Okay.
I thought I had seen some, like, something along the line of what Lynn said. And I was also wondering if they want it mailed. It's a 12-mile mail, round trip from here, here to the post office. So, at this rate, $0.56 a mile, that is going to be $6.50 or $7.
Okay, good idea.
And I also, I had a question, I emailed you, maybe you hadn't seen it yet. On this last paragraph of the first page about a request form is not required for certain, for current items of business schedule, such as city commissions, boards, committees, or council. Now.
Actually, we cannot require the request form to be filled out by the Requestor at all. The way I see it, if someone comes in and verbally requests something that's going to take us apart, prepare, or calls in a request, or, or doesn't send us a form and an email, we're going to have to fill out that form just for our records, to make sure we have a record.
Okay, because what I was wondering, like, city commission, say if we at some time have a planning and zoning commission, there has to be minutes of their meetings. And I think that would be true of probably any of those items. So, that is why I was wondering. So what you're saying is, is basically you cannot require a request form for those?
I did not find, I mean, the law is pretty specific that they can request it any way they choose. But I think for our benefit of knowing when the request comes in, when it gets fulfilled, we should have a record of that. I hope you agree.
If they don't supply one, we'll fill one out.
Exactly.
Okay.
Can we require them to agree that, you know, to sign the form once we filled it out, that they would agree that that's exactly what they're asking for?
You can try.
Because that's one of the things that's being discussed right now, again, down in Little Rock. I think there's four different bills being considered that have to do with FOIA, and one of them is covering the legal, the attorney fees, if somebody files, you know, a complaint, you know, that they, that they didn't get their information in time or that.
I can see it coming to a who said, she said, without any signatures or without any, you know, real documentation from a Requestor, if it's verbal, on a. if it's verbal, on a telephone call, or what have you, it's not a great way to conduct business.
Now, the specific example that they used was somebody turned in a FOIA request, and it was a very complicated FOIA request. And it took the clerk a couple of days to figure out exactly what it was that the people wanted. And then she put all the information together, and she gave it to, gave it to the person. She wasn't, she was working in good faith through the whole process, didn't try to withhold anything. However, she didn't meet the three-day deadline. Before the three-day clock ran out, the Requester hired a lawyer. And the lawyer filed some, something, whatever lawyers do. And they wanted, for the new law, if it pass, passes, would require then the city to pay the attorney fees for filing what amounted to an unnecessary lawsuit when everybody was acting in good faith. And I have no idea if it'll pass or not, but it...
I mean, you would think that even the Requester would want to have their point of origin documented.
Yeah. I don't know that it would ever, ever impact us. I mean, this could be, it could have been some real complicated, you know, legal issue or something like that, that, that required lots and lots of different documents. I don't know. But it was, you know, it was the example they gave, so...
Yeah, I think, I think having that documentation and even both parties signing it, it actually benefits both parties to get...
But the bottom line of the legislation, we're not here to talk about the legislation, but the bottom line of the legislation was that acting in good faith is not a defense if they get a lawyer.
I think they also said that if they don't comply, the clerk or the court can be prosecuted.
And even the language people use. A citizen may not use the same language to describe a document that we, being closer to a document, would use to describe it. And so, there can be miscommunications in what's being requested. The Requester's requesting something that they're thinking of in their head, but the person processing it here, that doesn't occur to what they're thinking of in their head does come across in the language.
I think, I mean, we may be fretting over nothing, but I think we need to make every attempt to get the form filled out and have both parties agree that that's what's being requested. Regardless of who fills out the form, at least have everybody agree that that's what's being requested.
Well, at least if we have a form, we can try to make that happen.
Yeah.
Does the Freedom of Information Act say that we have to provide it in the form they requested?
You provide it in the form they requested if it doesn't cause you too much trouble.
Well, I mean, if somebody says, all right, we're considering a resolution to get a credit card, and somebody wants that resolution, and they say, you know, can you print it out and mail it to me? And all right, we can't say, have you got an email? Or can you have access to our website?
You could, you could try that and see if that would satisfy them, but if they don't want it that way, you really need to mail it.
The other thing we don't specifically, in, in this policy, we specifically say that we're going to provide the thumb drive. We don't specifically say that we will not accept someone else's thumb drive because it may be contaminated.
No, I didn't say that.
I wonder if we should. Or if that's just another one of those things where we would, if they would say, well, I'm going to bring my thumb drive in, and we would say, we can't use it because of the potential for virus. We have to use a brand-new thumb drive.
You might want to run that by an attorney or something. I don't know if we could deny that because of, you know, COVID contamination issues or, you know, that...
Yeah, I'm not worried about COVID contamination. I'm worried about viruses.
Viruses.
Cyber threat. It's a cyber threat.
Cyber threat. You know, that's a really good question.
I don't know. Is there a requirement to provide, to use digital transmit, you know, thumb drives, et cetera?
I think there's going to be a lot of cases where that's the way we're going to want to do it, if it's acceptable to the person.
I don't know. Thumb drives, you know, those documents are so small compared to a little thumb drive.
Well, I would think they would want it emailed to them if it was small enough. But like the recordings that were requested, those take too much room to email.
I don't know. I read the FOI thing, and it said, you don't have to create documents.
True.
So, they can't require, or require you to spend a lot of time making a report or something.
That's absolutely true.
Is existing documentation.
But if the document exists in our system, it needs to be available in a commonly-used form. So, and PDF is a commonly-used form.
My comment, I was concerned when I scanned and emailed all of these resolutions in one email to Linda. At first, she thought she didn't get them. And I thought, well, I know there had instances where a file was too big, so I wouldn't send them. But all of those resolutions went.
Yes, they did. I just needed to scroll down because there was such a loop.
Doesn't it have to be bigger than like 10 megabytes or something before it won't send?
Yeah, yeah, it's up there.
It's big.
Unless you're sending a lot of pictures or something.
10 megabytes sounds familiar to me.
Pictures, probably.
I think we're worrying about something.
Pictures take a lot of room.
Pick up a lot of...
And recordings take up a lot of room.
I, I had intended to ask this to be voted on tonight, but I think we should run this by the legal people at, at the municipal league.
I agree.
Just bounce it off of them. They'll probably have, and FOIA is fresh in their mind because of these four different bills that are running through.
Yeah, and you know, I talked to that assistant director, I think it was, at the municipal league, and asked her about FOIA policy. Did she have a template for a FOIA policy? And she said, well, people just follow the law, whatever in the handbook. But, you know...
That's about 20 pages.
That's a little bit too broad for my mind, so...
Yeah, but I think we...
It's too broad and subject to interpretation.
Exactly.
I've, I've been having really good luck sending things to Lanning, Richmond?
Yeah.
And I've been getting replies back from him the same day I sent something to him. He might try Lanning.
Okay. Do you want me to do that, Dan?
Yeah, I think it would be a, a good idea to run this by. And then we can vote on it. We can vote on it at the next meeting.
Yeah, that'll be fine.
So, you're going to amend the first page, last paragraph, and our website, cityofholidayisland.com? Just above the graphic, right here?
Oh, right above there.
And our website.
Those files will be there by kind of in on our website.
I think Dan was going to pull it, right? We're not going to vote on it tonight, are we?
Right, we're not going to vote on it tonight.
But, you know, I could add that in there before I send it to the attorney.
And...
Then the question about whether we can mandate our USB drive not accept public USBs.
Yeah.
Put the language in there, and then they'll see it, and they'll tell you if we can do that or not.
Hopefully, yeah. You want to look at the form before we go away, or not?
I didn't see any problem with the form.
Okay.
Nor did I.
I looked at it. I didn't see a problem.
Okay, we can skip it soon.
The only question, you know, the fee agreement's on there, so if you do anything with your policy, you need to modify the form.
Yeah, actually, I was thinking that the fee agreement wouldn't be necessarily so much part of the policy as the form itself.
All right.
So... So, because it might change.
Sure.
Should we comment in there somewhere about we will not create documents that do not exist?
No, I don't think, you know, that's, that's in the polit...
That's in the FOIA.
That's in the law.
If somebody asks for something that doesn't exist, we would tell them that and, and say that...
I can't create something.
They cannot record you to this. Create or prepare some kind of a specific report.
Then lastly, in the electronic world, everything needs a file name. So, maybe in a footer, you can give us a file name so we can retrieve it later. Now, like, look at this form and go, oh, I know where to find this. Here's the file name.
Okay.
Put that in the footer.
Okay, that's a good point. We need to...
We need to be disciplined about how we name things.
We do.
And where we store them.
We need a policy manual.
That's another committee.
This will be the first one.
Sure.
I don't think too many must get on it, to be honest.
Well, that's true. I went through an ISO process, and so, you know, you get some discipline in what you got to do.
I was thinking about that very thing, that we've got to come up, if we're going to have everything electronic, we've got to come up with an electronic filing system and naming conditions for every document. And so, that's another committee on what's...
You're thinking...
That's just what Lynn said.
Are you thinking totally paperless?
As much as possible.
That'd be our goal.
Nearly everything could be paperless.
You have requirements that things have to be kept in a book, but the documents can exist electronically.
And then they're never lost.
And there's, I have the statute I was going to send to you that says that these documents have to be scanned and saved electronically. And I don't remember what kind of document it was, but there is a requirement for some types of documents that have to be put on electronic media.
Well, I know when we get to having some money to make some purchases and so on, I was thinking of invoices and pay bills and things like that. And I was told by, I'm trying to think, I think it was by the accounting software people that I believe there are two cities that are primarily paperless. One of them, I believe, was P. Ridge. And I can't remember who the other one was.
I wonder if Batesville's one. I think that Assistant Director, Colleen Batesville, had a really good clerk. It would be a good person to hire.
Okay. Anything more on FOIA?
Yep.
All right, public comments. Linda, you're going to have to see if anybody has their hand raised.
Hang on. Let me stop sharing the screen here. Did I already do that?
There's a post there. Someone made a chat.
We've got chat. There's been some chat. I've got a hand raised right now by, I think it's, it's C. and J., who I believe is Rebecca Sherman. I don't know if she's able to talk. I don't know why her hand is raised. Maybe she put it on chat. So, let's see if she has something on chat here. Well, she's written so much here. I can't... Let me read. I'll, I'll read what she wrote here, okay? First of all, she said, who is the host for the domain name? That's Ionos. And that's all, that's also our host for the email system. Ionos 101.
Might spell it out for her.
I-O-N-O-S. It's the same outfit that Hi-Sid uses. Okay, next. She says, okay. Okay, we got that one. Okay. Oh, I think she had a comment about the posting. Now, she says, has an ad hoc committee, and those members and meetings are available? The domain host for cityofholidayisland.com is who? I said that. The host for the domain is who? That's Ionos. I can see email addresses, and that comes with the domain host or the website host, or is it separate? The YouTube channel is under the name of City of Holiday Island and belongs to the town. Available for all to see without a sign-in requirement. Yes, it's available for anybody. That's, that's all she has on chat. So, I'm assuming we answered all of her questions.
Any other public comments?
Anybody raise their hand?
If you find anybody, we can come back to it. Council member comments?
Friday is the meeting of the C. 3, I guess which is now the C. 4.
Economic Development.
Yeah, Economic Development, countywide. You and I will be attending that Friday morning.
All right, this will be news to Jerry and I, and me both. There's apparently a county-wide economic development activity of some sort, and we are invited to attend. And the other mayors from the other towns are supposed to be there, so it'll be a networking opportunity. But we'll, we'll see.
Yeah, there's, there's this county thing, and then there's also a Northwest Arkansas Economic Development Coalition. And then there's Arkansas Department of Economic Development. So, we'll be exploring those in the coming weeks and months.
I think Lawrence has been sitting in on some of those sessions in the past, so he might have some history for you.
I'll check to see if he's invited. I haven't seen him on any of the emails.
He was invited to the C. 3 thing, but he was on that one.
Haven't seen, I haven't seen his name on the email chain that's come out, but I wasn't really looking for it either. Any other council member comments? I do have a follow-up on our grant request for paving or resurfacing Hawk Drive. I got a call from the engineer or an engineer at the Department of Transportation. What's today, today's Tuesday?
Tuesday, 23rd.
It was probably yesterday. It might have been last Friday. He is going to set up a meeting or a time to come up here. And he said he'll probably look at this one himself, which means that there must be a staff of people that check out these projects. But our, our project is, you know, must have been on the top of the heap because we've been called already. So, I'm crossing my fingers that that's a, a good sign. What his job is, is to come up here and confirm that the project qualifies for the grant money. And if it does, then it goes to the committee, and they, you know, they award grant money to... I don't know if he's going to do any kind of a cost estimate or if that comes after the committee selects our project. I'll find that out. It's pretty interesting. You know, he called me, and, and he said that it was, he had to do a little bit of forensics work to get my name and phone number because, and I, and I, you know... because, and I, and I, you know, I pulled out the application. Nowhere in the application, other than signing my name on the bottom of it, nowhere in the whole application did I put, this is my phone number, this is my email address. Nothing. So he called up here and the first people he got ahold of was the Water, Water Department. And they forwarded him to the office here, who gave him my name and phone number. But he said, don't feel bad. He said it happens all the time.
They might have put that on the form.
So it's, that's, I take that as a real positive sign that our grant request is already getting some action. Any other council member comments?
I might comment. I've been participating in sessions on grants, which is a weekly thing every Wednesday for 16 weeks. And I think I've attended two sessions. Last week's was canceled because I think they had computer problems with the bad weather. And so that's been postponed for a week. So I've been observing that. And there's some sort of a certification if you attend all 16 weeks. I can't say that I've learned anything much new yet. So there is a session coming up in March for clerks and recorders. It's a three-day thing. I think it's two hours a day for three days. That's $40. There's a fee of 40 bucks for that. And there's, I've looked, I haven't joined yet. There's a clerks and recorders section, which I think has annual dues of $50 to join. I've also looked at, did a preliminary look at becoming a notary public. Of course, there's, I think, a $50 fee for that. And you have to buy a bond and stuff and a test. You have, you have to study and take a test, so...
It may not be advantageous to have it because I don't think the notary can notarize his own documents.
That would be my thought.
Yeah.
I could notarize other people's, but not our own. And I assume, I don't know, maybe the district has a notary?
Yeah, it could be anybody.
I have several better notaries.
There's a couple, there's several of them here, several at the bank. And the bank has notarized all of the stuff that I've ever had.
That's where I always go.
Okay, moving on to scheduling. Next regular meeting is, on the next regular meeting date.
Sometime in March.
My phone would have it.
Third Tuesday of March. I didn't have my phone. It should be the same as, be the 16th, same as it was in February.
March 16th.
No, it's not going to be the same.
It is March 16th.
It's 20th.
No. Because February is, has an extra day.
No, I don't have an extra day.
That was last year. Sorry.
All right, the next regular meeting is March 16th. Anything else? Any announcements? If not, I'll entertain a motion that we adjourn.
Make a motion, we adjourn.
You made a motion. We have a second.
Second.
Jerry seconded it. All in favor, say aye.